Therapy.
Well, I'm, I was, I was in additional pain.
No, she's not gonna make it today. Don't, don't put any of those. I think you did the time before you forgot how to do this.
Well, I think I'm really.
I guess as long as I get three signatures, I don't care who, who signed it. Yes. You don't have to, you can just. That's two, there's three different ones. I believe that's the, 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 the operation, those two. It's gonna say they'll make me tackle both of them.
Call council, order November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three, seven o'clock PM. Uh, is there any citizen comments? No citizen comments, uh, additions to the agenda?
I would like to add the old Dillon Building. I got two to add, one, number one is Del- Dillon's Building next door. And the Kansas Community Empowerment, both will be right after the citizen comment.
We didn't have any citizen comments, any other, any citizen comments backing up here, nope. Okay, uh, Jan Steen?
Um, I, I need a motion real quick.
Oh.
Uh, what was the second one?
The Kansas Community Empowerment.
I'd make a motion to add Kansas Community Empowerment to the agenda and also the, the one's going to be.
Got a motion on the table by Kyle and a second one by Aaron, all favor? All opposed?
Right.
After three, four, and oh. And Sharon is gone, let that be noted.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
June.
Where would you like me to stand?
Anywhere, anywhere you want.
Okay, I guess I'll just stand here.
Danny, can you?
Yeah. So my name is Jan Steen, I work with K-State Research and Extension as a community vitality specialist. I've been talking with Ryan Russell a little bit about some of the resources that we have.
Can I come up here so he can hear?
Yeah. So I've been talking to Ryan Russell a little bit about some of the resources we have at the university. And one of those is the Kansas Community Empowerment Program. And the Kansas Community Empowerment Program is a volunteer-based community improvement initiative that was started about fifty-three years ago. You might remember it, um, it's existed here in St. John, uh, it was the Kansas Pride Program for about fifty-three years. And recently rebranded, our board of directors decided to change the logo and change the name of the program. Pride stands for Programming Resources with Initiative for Development Effectiveness, a good nineteen seventies acronym. Tried to cram some words into it. But this program has served over four hundred communities across the state, every county in the state. And it works in the way that residents, business owners, representatives from civic organizations, other organizations like schools, churches, come together and identify needs in the community. Every community has unique and different needs. We don't come in from Manhattan or Topeka and tell you, we think you need a steakhouse and a swimming pool to be a successful community because we don't live here. We don't know what, what resources you have, what history you have. But we do have tools and resources at the university level to help you reach your goals once you identify your needs. So for the past fifty-three years, um, this program has, has worked in assisting those communities and nonprofits and businesses who are coming together. Governor Docking actually started the, the program with what is now Evergy and Kansas Gas, uh, some of those leaders. And it is a partnership at the state level. K-State Research and Extension, we're the education arm, we also administer the program. We offer grant writing workshops, we offer community assessments, uh, a networking database for communities to work with each other. For example, if you're wanting to put banners on Main Street or start a community building, you don't have to start from scratch. A lot of our communities over the last fifty-three years have done projects just like that, so we can get you in touch with them. So you can know what they know now, what they wish they knew at your stage. Kansas Pride Inc. is our nonprofit board of directors made up of sponsors, uh, community members, and also program partners. Some of those sponsors are Evergy, Midwest Energy, Idea Tech, Next Tech, Kansas Rural Water Association. Kansas Department of Commerce is one of the original partners as well. They offer CBVG grants, Kansas Main Street Program, placemaking grants and such. And then most recently, the Kansas Masons came on board as a sponsor of the program partnership in two thousand and seventeen. Along with several other universities in the state that they funded programs for, they've given us one point two million dollars to help expand the program over the last six or seven years. And in addition to that, they've offered grants at the state level for local communities. If you have a Masonic Lodge in or near your community, they also may have volunteers and local funding that is in addition to the funding at the state level. We work with the Dane J. Hanson Foundation in Northwest Kansas. The League of Kansas Municipalities and Kansas Association of Counties also serve on our board of directors and are a resource for communities that they have questions about any of the projects that they're doing or, or some of the activities they're involved with. We can't see it very well, um, out in this part of the state, but there are eighty-six communities that are participating right now. It's the most we've had since the nineteen nineties. And speaking of which, um, yeah, St. John participated in the late nineteen seventies, the late nineties through the early two thousands. So there has been a history of program participation here. As you can see, uh, Maxville, Larned, Arlington, Kansas, Bushton are the ones that are participating in the area at the moment. And these communities get together and they identify what the residents want to do in the community. That could be a swimming pool, it could be a walking trail in the park, it could be a Fourth of July celebration. We've had communities do those, uh, community concerts, fall festivals, building daycare centers, raising money to give entrepreneurs to start businesses on Main Street, repair sidewalks and streets, build parks, walking trails, ball diamonds, uh, improve housing in the community. Eleven hundred projects total last year, uh, a hundred and six of those were new, so many of those projects were continuing. Could be maintenance in the park, beautification on Main Street, or it could be a project that's continued over a couple of years that is a major project. Four hundred and one of those projects have been youth-related, they either directly benefit young people or, or the youth were involved in identifying the needs in the community and helped with the project. There have been six hundred and forty-seven partnerships, so if you, you can imagine a, a KCE group locally notices that the fire department is in need of new equipment. They might partner with that fire department to help raise money to, to buy that new equipment, so that's some of those partnerships. And about eighty-four thousand hours of volunteer time, about two point two million dollars is what that equals to volunteer. And across the state, uh, communities have raised on their own, uh, over nine hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in the past year. About four hundred and sixty-five thousand in, in private, uh, public dollars, which is dollars from the local city, county, state, or federal grants, and private dollars, which is local donations, fundraisers, or foundation and company, company grants. And some of those resources that we have, we have educational resources on how to attract and retain volunteers, how to handle dollars, how to write grants, how to communicate your success so people know what you're doing and, and want to become involved or can at least benefit from the projects that you're doing. We offer grant searches for communities, those are free of charge. We also have grants inside of the program for participating communities, anywhere from two hundred dollars to fifteen thousand dollars. We offer grant writing workshops, we have recognition awards that come with a, um, press release. So people in the state know that you're doing great things here in the community. We have technical support and a record-keeping database, plus quite a few other resources that are available. It's free to participate in, no cost, it's part of extension, so, uh, there's no cost to you if, if St. John would like to enroll. And we walk you through the process and, and let you know about all the resources that are available. You all have some contact information here, that's the same addresses that you will see up on the screen. If you're interested in the program, we'll be happy to talk to you, um, even come and give a presentation in a larger group. I'm just based in Arlington, Kansas, about forty minutes away, so it's, it's easy for me to get here. And in addition to that, um, we do grant searches whether you're participating in the program or not. For any organization, whether it's a church or a school or a nonprofit or the city itself, if you have a project that you're working on and you would like funding for that project, we have access to multiple grant databases and we can do grant searches for you. We've been doing that for about a year. And so far, communities are reporting that they've raised about nine hundred thousand dollars based on the, the resources that we've given them. We also do grant writing workshops. So if you want a grant writing workshop locally here, you can get in touch with Tricia Green at the twenty-one Central Extension District. And she will help coordinate that. Participants in our grant writing workshops have reported they've earned about thirty-eight million dollars in grants since taking the workshops. Pretty useful, they're only about sixty dollars to participate in that. In addition to that, we have board training, if you have any elected or, or appointed boards in the community and even those board members are not sure what their roles are, how to handle dollars, avoid conflict, and, uh, maybe set a mission, a vision statement, we have board leadership training. We can come in with facilitators if you have a discussion in the community that you would like a third party to come in and actually moderate that and guide that discussion. We have first impressions with St. John participated in about three years ago, I think, with Conway Springs, Kansas. And youth community perceptions is another, uh, community assessment where we can have the middle schoolers and high schoolers in the community go around and find what's important to them, what they identify are needs, uh, in the community and then work with the city to address those. For business and entrepreneurship, we have First Friday E-calls, Rural Grocery Initiative, Kansas Healthy Food Initiative, we have customer service training. If any businesses in town would be interested in having their workers have any customer service training. And we also have Kansas Remote, uh, Work Certification. So if you have good internet in town and people are looking for jobs at Amazon or Xerox or Boeing and as a remote worker, we have certifications, uh, for remote workers and also remote work leaders who are leading teams of remote workers that, that we offer on a regular basis. That's it, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. It's just far enough back that I don't know what projects you worked on when St. John was on the program board. But there might be somebody maybe who remembers. I know Maxville focuses on mostly community events that they have over there for their projects. Alright?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Moving on, Vanessa, the Dillon Building.
Yeah, how's everybody doing tonight? Um, I was just wondering how you guys feel about selling the Dillon. Any thoughts?
I guess since, uh, council, since the city's owned it, we've been looking for somebody to, you know, purchase it, to add a business, something that's going to add something to the square.
Yeah, the main things I was wanting the Dillon still was, uh, to put a gymnastics facility for the little kids to be able to do gymnastics there. Right now is being done at the annex and it's really not very formal. Somebody just come and put mat to the floor and do things. And she's really good, she just, wish she could have an established place to do more things. And we have, well, no, we, the RAG is in charge of that and they have around forty kids right now. And we think if there's something established, they will pull more kids in and it will be a little bit more official than it's a gymnastics or tumbling class. And, and this is nothing to do with the RAG, I, I would just get it done just so the community can have something. I will take all the expense, bring the equipment and just let them use it. And the second one is the Cornwall Beef Store in the front, so there will be two things going on right now there if I can get the building.
It's the best idea.
Yeah.
Somebody to actually fix it up, do it right and create a business opportunity for daily.
And it will be fixed really good, I mean, it's not gonna be just like patch in here, patch in there, let's put things in there. I will have somebody come over and scrap everything in and fix it right.
Yeah, I'm pretty open-minded to selling it for something like that, I guess. Yeah, a business and, uh, something for the use of another activity or a better place for an activity.
So Pam had emailed me about what, what the city has to do if we want to sell the property. There's not any set rule on what the council has to do, it just has, you guys have to decide it's in the best interest of the city. I suggested posting, if you are considering selling it, that is for sale, you're taking offers, but there, there's no requirement, either state statute, city ordinance, that says you have to do that. So if, if you guys think it's in the best interest of the city to sell it, um, you can make that decision without a fan.
And all the, um, people that have interest in the building, um, I'm not trying to take her side, but they seem the most promising. We do have some interest that, you know, people reach out and ask how much we want for it. One wants to turn it into apartments, um, downstairs and upstairs, obviously, we can't do that. But the other wants to turn it into like a little cafe, um, with the living quarter upstairs, but, um, he never got back with me after he came and looked at it. So I didn't know, it was just too much repair or remodel to be done. Yeah, we do have some interest, so people know that. Sorry?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, the audio is cutting out really bad, I haven't caught much of what's been said.
Oh. Um, maybe I should record the meeting so you can, um, watch it later.
Recording in progress.
Okay, so we're talking about the Dillon's Building. Um, Vanessa Cornwell wants to buy it to put gymnastic in, um, facility in and have Cornwall Beef as a storefront for the Dillon's Building. Do you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, did you hear what I said?
No.
Okay, so Vanessa Cornwell is here and she is wanting to buy the Dillon's Building to turn it into the gymnastic facility, the back half of it and the front half, um, Cornwall Beef would like to have a storefront.
Uh.
For the, the building.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's where we're at.
Okay, and what is the consensus of the council at the moment?
Um, we are discussing that. We're talking about it.
Would you call just to speak?
You might call, yeah.
Here, I'm just gonna call you on my phone.
Okay, sounds good.
Vanessa, would you be buying this personally or as, as Cornwall Beef or?
Just as me.
As her personally?
I guess the store will be profit for Lisa if she rents, I mean, she wants to rent it from me so she can put the store there. I would like to have it all gymnastics, but it's, it's fine if we can put the store there, that's okay. But the, the gymnastics will be a nonprofit, I mean, I will, I just want the kids to have a space to, to work out and have fun and learn new things because.
I think they like it, right?
Yeah. We have a lot of kids from the community, they love it and I think it's, it will be good for the square to have it and bring the building to life and do something with it.
Think kind of been in contact with economic development for years on just, you know, if you find someone that's coming to town that wants to start a business that, you know, we have this building that we may sell, you know, I, I think it's pretty much from advertised.
Yes.
I, I think it would for sure get done and get done right if, if they had it, I, I think it's gonna be a daily, daily in and out, people in there. So I compared it if you were just sell, someone was gonna use it for a few times a year, so.
Say currently we use it at Christmas for Santa and fireworks in July, is that pretty much it?
Yeah.
Be the piece of the square.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I'm one, that'd be, that'd be a great thing.
Yeah, I mean, how, how's that working as far as dollar amount, I mean? Well, that's, that's you guys' decision, what you said. Set the price at, again, the, the standard is what's in the best interest of the city, so, you know, what, what the fair price is and what. The city's not getting ripped off, but you're also letting something good come in there. You can call up executive session to discuss, you know, sale or acquisition of real estate, uh, talk about the price on that. I, I'm the wrong person to spit out a number and say.
Sure, sure, yeah.
I can, I can.
We're worried about the process of what to, how it needs to happen if we're interested in it.
I mean, if you guys are good selling it and you can do it with, you know, a motion to sell it, this price to her, then vote on that and that.
I think I can remember what we get for it when we were in the daughter. If you guys are interested in the daughter, I'm gonna say.
Would it, I mean, I feel like it'd be in the best, in the city's best interest to go into contract with the first right of refusal if you wanna get rid of it, unless we just want it to completely be gone. Like, for if you decide fifteen years down the road, you're ready to get rid of it, have a first right of refusal. I mean.
Just kind of fit to join the city property right now.
Yeah, just, it's, yeah, it's right there beside us and, I don't know.
It probably won't be rid of it.
I, which is, which would probably be ideal, I just, you know.
Looking out for the city.
Just looking out for the city, it would be best because it's adjoining to our property and it's right on the square, just, I don't know, can't predict the future.
Sure.
So do we have to set a price or could we, or could she bring an offer back to the next meeting and we could accept?
Yeah.
Or counter offer or?
Yeah, you guys.
We would have that option if that's.
Yeah, you guys could do that if that's how.
If she could bring, get an offer to Pam and then we could.
Yeah.
Accept the offer or counter. I don't know.
It's gonna take a lot, lots of fixes up, you know, it's.
I was gonna say, uh, it is gonna take around probably around eighty thousand or ninety thousand.
I don't think it needs to be a big number. Sure, so maybe it'd be better to just let her come to us with an offer and we can discuss it rather than, I, I don't.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm on who, I, yeah, I think it's gonna take a lot of money to get it the way they want, so I don't think a steep price is probably necessary. But I, I really don't know.
Sure.
Where that number needs to be either. So would that be how you'd like to see it then?
Can I, uh, just offer something right now because if you guys decide to say yes, I would like to start it as soon as possible. Like, I don't know, I'm, I'm sure my number's not gonna be very big because I, like I said, I, I need room to fix it and buy the equipment. But I can give like, I don't know, six, five thousand dollars, would you guys take that?
I, I think there's a good business opportunity and, you know, I, I think it's a reason to offer and can't just give away the, you know, give a little bit of cost to get, get, get business on, on the square. But.
Yeah, I mean, she's gonna put a lot of money into it and then the, it's gonna get assessed at a higher rate and there's gonna be property tax on it too, so, which it's not right now.
And the insurance is really high.
I believe that too.
Yeah, use of the electricity and the street is, you're gonna take some.
Yeah. Whatever they do with Cornwall Beef.
Sure.
So we're agree with everything that's been said by council and, um, I think that we have a business coming in and we should do it, everything that we can to help. And also, as it was stated, there are the benefits of having some life back on the, uh, on the square, which will be nice.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, Mark. And you would be okay to do the first right, like if you decide to sell it, you'd give us first chance to buy back?
Yep.
Sounds good.
I, I'd make a motion to, uh, sell the old Dillon's Building, uh, to Vanessa Cornwell in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Second.
With.
With first right?
Yeah, with first right of refusal.
Okay.
Second, second, Mark didn't argue.
Yeah, I would second that.
Motion on the table by Kyle and second by Mark, any more discussion? Uh, point of interest here, we don't need to put this in front of any public or newspaper or anything, do we, Danny?
No, I don't think so.
Got a motion on the table and a second by, uh, Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes four and oh, all phone?
You're still gonna let me use the building for, on the second, right?
Um, sure. I'll have some people working on it, like tomorrow.
Well, let me know if you do, then I can find a spot.
Well, I'm sure the contractors are busy right now, but, I mean, I want to start as soon as possible, as soon as somebody can start working on it.
Okay, yeah.
First closing note at the end.
The, so do we need to vote on?
That was, that was my question. I mean, I, I can do a deed in a right of first refusal if. I, I don't think we need to do a contract if we're gonna do that, you know, here shortly, generally you do a contract if you're gonna get financing or it's set out a way. So if you're comfortable with me preparing a deed, the right of first refusal and send it to Pam.
Yeah, that was fine.
Whose name needs to be?
You can go onto the table if you need to.
Um, just, you have it just in your name if you wanted a company name. And most things that we do, we do as joint tenants of the right of survival, we need to, one, you pass its way, pass the bottom, I believe the other one doesn't have to go through probate to get their half.
So you don't put both of our names?
No, I put, um, both you guys as joint tenants, um, with the right of survival.
Okay, that's fine.
So that way you don't have to worry about if he dies, you have half and your half is stuck in the state, if he dies, it's all really.
Okay, do you need address or anything else?
Yeah, the, the registered deeds will for a little closing statement, but that's something that I can shoot to Pam too, and you guys can fill out and be signed with you.
My next one.
Um, that, that's the other question, and I'll, I'll let you guys fill that out, but it'll ask like, do you want any joint property, um, that sort of thing, what what they're looking for, that you didn't take advantage of the city and force us into selling this to you, something like that.
That's okay.
You just tell me what you mean.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you guys.
You looked really nice, I promise.
Moving on, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes of regular council meeting November seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve regular council meeting minutes, November seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion on table here, second, second by Aaron, any more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes four and O. Okay, moving on, I need a, I'd entertain a motion for appropriate ordinance eleven twenty-one of two thousand twenty-three in the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number eleven twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second. Got a motion on the table and a second by Aaron, all in favor?
Aye.
Same.
Uh, Ryan abstains, passes three, you know. Ryan abstains. Entertain a motion for Berry Tractor, the amount of a thousand six hundred three dollars and fifty-two cents, and that is for the, something to do with the telestroping pipe.
Uh, make a motion to approve Berry Tractor invoice in the amount of one thousand six hundred three dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second. Got a motion on the table and a second, all in favor?
What exactly?
Is that what we talked about?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh, I read it.
Okay, make sure.
Right here.
Yeah.
It's, uh, two room Vanguard hallies, I don't know.
It's with that sweeper.
That sweeper?
Okay.
Got a motion on the table and a, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes four and O. Department head, electric department Curtis.
Nothing.
Nothing. Any questions for Curtis? Water department, Jason's gone, freaks or he's gone, freaks?
The pool people will start working on the pool next week, so. Yep.
I think Jason's doing okay.
Yeah, his surgery went well, so he should be back sometime mid-December-ish. At the latest.
Light duty for a couple weeks or so.
Yes.
Police chief Tori, you got anything? Nothing. City clerk Pam?
None.
Any questions for Pam? City attorney?
I got one for you. Did we do a, um, we did a rental agreement with Mark then?
Yes.
Is it like a one yearly, sort of one year, so?
Yep, it's year to year.
Year to year, okay. Good, he, I saw him and he seemed pretty excited about just having a spot.
Yeah. He's just, I think he's excited not having to drop to Russell every day.
Yeah, that's what he said, and he said with his job, he's gotta be, um, have fiber optic internet, I think.
Correct.
And so he couldn't work at home in the country, so, yeah, he seemed excited, so.
Is he, how's he doing, internet there?
So he, he's providing his own internet, so he has to get with Golden Bell and get that set up.
Oh, he's, he's, he's in the sort of, okay.
Right, yeah.
I know Sandy Smith had asked like, hey, I think they're gonna rent this out, but we pay, I guess she said they pay for their own internet over there.
I'll have to check, but I'm pretty sure we do.
I don't know, that's what she said, and so she was worried that he was gonna get on their wifi without approval, I was like, well,
Oh, yeah, no, no, he-
Tell us if he does, but, you know, if you wanna deal with him and make a agreement with him, then that's, whatever.
Yeah, no, he, he, I made it known that he has to have his own phone and internet.
Okay.
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah. What, what does he need?
Uh, some insurance, but it's, uh, a lot of big companies would require it just for privacy. Yeah, that is, he said he had to have fiber optic for the security, you guys like, so. Yeah, I really just don't know what, but he just said it's insurance.
Backing up on it, skipped Michael, you got anything?
Oh, I really don't.
You never do. Any more discussion? City attorney, Danny?
Um, not much, I sent a letter to the current owners, the previous owner, the two oh five Southwest, I think Pam sent that to everybody, basically saying appreciate what you've done so far, but get these cars cleaned up the next three days, so hopefully we hear something on that end.
Anybody got any other discussion on the other properties? Like we covered them all last meeting.
Is the X-line globe going to be discussed?
It's under the new business. I will need to talk about the insurance. I, I called and talked to the Jennifer, I think Jennifer is, would be the main person if we do decide to go with them. And she did explain to me that if we want to use the local bank to, um, do the saving accounts and stuff like that, that's totally up to us. There's, there's not any, like, it's not gonna be any different than if we're doing it or they're doing it. If we're doing it ourselves, we're gonna have to, you know, reconcile and, um, do the maintenance on the account ourselves. But if they do it, they'll handle everything and then they'll just send like the report at the end of each month, letting you know that, hey, this is what going into the account, this is what coming out, and that's really the only difference. Um, she assured me that the policy and everything, the premium that we have will not change. The only thing that changes, the employee will be carrying two cars. Um, I did mention that, like, we talked about, you know, if we have enough money saved back to where we're like, okay, we don't want to keep saving it, like, she said that there is no limit of when you can pull that money out, like, let's say if we think, cause she, she, she looked at the account monthly and she's like, okay, this month you guys have so much, cause like the, the first three months you guys are doing good, nobody put a claim in or anything like that, so you have a lot of money saved back. So she's like, if you wanna pull that money out, month four, and be like, okay, we're gonna lower the employees', you know, um, deductions to help them, um, not paying so much in, out of their pocket, you're more than welcome to do that. And then like if, like, the next, uh, the five, the month five, you have like so many claims, then you can be like, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna step back and we're gonna go back to like eighty-five fifteen until, you know, we have some more money saved, like, we can go back and forth. There is no rule of like, okay, you have to do this, and you gotta stick with it until, you know, next year or whatever. So I really like that part, cause I would love to lower, you know, the employee part of it, cause when I started, it was ninety-ten. And I, I feel like that's draw a lot more people to our workforce, and I, I would like to go back to that.
Do you have an opinion of keeping the money in a local bank versus having, cause I, I mean, if there's cost associated to you having to deal with
Right.
The intake and outtake versus then managing it, so.
I mean, being the control freak that I am, I prefer to bank locally, so.
You would rather have it here, okay.
Yes, cause I mean, I reconcile the bank monthly anyway, one more account's not gonna hurt anything.
Well, I just, uh, I just didn't want you to feel like you were obligated to do it
Sure.
when we're, we are paying them to like, so to like increase your workload when we're already paying them to do it, I.
Something I was a little concerned about is how much time it's gonna take for you to do each month, you know, I mean, if you know, nothing says that we can't try for a year like this.
Right.
And switch gears and say, it's just a way to look at it.
And
Yeah.
As far as, you know, say we jump into this and getting back into Blue Cross Blue Shields after, after renewal next year, I mean, that's probably going to be, you know, it's probably gonna go up, you know, see a significant jump, but
Right.
we can get back into Blue Cross Blue Shields and.
Yes, if we decided we don't like it, yes, and whatever we save in our account, we can always offset the, you know, the jump of the prize going back into Blue Cross if we don't like it, so. But obviously this program's gonna take us about two years for us to see, you know, like to save up enough money to see the difference, yeah. Depending on how much claim we have, I guess, but I feel like our employees are pretty healthy. And those that are, um, that are going through stuff right now, they're not on our insurance.
Unfortunately.
Yes.
Nothing to do about it, but unfortunately, which, but we're covering the song or.
Yes. Right.
Yeah, I think it, it seems like there's like almost no risk and then the chance for relief, it seems. Because our total obligation remains the same, if everything gets maxed out, our obligation is what we plan to spend anyways, so.
I, I think the one, the one risk that he kind of glossed over, so he has a reserves amount to be fully funded at, what is it, like a four point nine out of thirteen employees using all of it, using all of their deductible. So I, I know he said the number's way under, but if the city had seven employees that were deductible, then that's all out of pocket for the city to cover. Those other employees pass the fully funded part.
I guess that is one risk of
But the
The chance of seven employee in one month, it's, you know, I mean, not saying that it's zero, but there's still a chance.
All right, I think it'd be using up their deductible within the year or whatever was, it seemed like there was a gap where if you went over, cause they, they didn't call fully funded having that amount for every employee, he was calling it having the amount that the city had to cover for four point nine or four point seven of the employees. I, I know, I just talked to the eight R heading Barbara County, since they did some, I don't know the exact number, but she said to save money for the county this year.
Yeah, we were just trying, I don't, yeah, for a year, you know, it, it's basically the same, same package that we have, try it. You know, it's worth, worth a shot.
Yeah, seems like a good deal. I make a motion to update our health insurance and go with the presented contract from Freedom Claim Management, I agree with Ben.
Got a motion on the table here, second.
Second.
Second by Ryan, any more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes four and O. Any discussion on Epic or Pickleball, the thought we'll move on to new business?
Cause we wanted to cover Pickleball.
Yes.
It's up to you guys.
No, no, we're using it.
He, he was just asking if you guys make decision on it yet, but he didn't, I asked him if we have a deadline that we need to give you the answer by, but he never texted me back, so.
I mean, I mean, if the money's there, we have something that looks like trash currently and we have to pay for twenty percent of it, being a usable thing that seems like a good amount of our community will use, so I think it's a break.
Somebody has a good idea and is contributing, you know, quite a bit more than what we are to, to make a
What was the figure on that?
Just ten thousand.
Is there anything, do we need to specify when it comes out and wait for a disbursement, or where do you, like, how does that work on your end?
I mean, we can cut a check anytime, cause we got the fund.
Okay.
So we can, you can make a motion now and then when he's ready, I can cut a check and don't have to bring it back to the table, so.
Does it go straight to the rec then?
Yes.
I make a motion that we give the rec commission ten thousand dollars to contribute to repurposing the old tennis courts at Brown Park into pickleball courts.
Second.
Got a motion on the table by Ca-, uh, by Aaron, a second by Kyle, any more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes four and O. With that being done, uh, we've got, you've got an invoice from X-line in front of you. Uh, so water pump for the Fairbanks Engine and Power Plant, and there's, I think it's, uh, we got six weeks after approval and a thirty day quote on this. And I guess the pump is already there, is that not right Curtis?
Yes.
And so it looks to me like it's, it's leaking, so it's got to be repaired. It's up to you guys.
Curtis, can I think about all that?
Well, I know they had it done about ten, fifteen years ago and it was quite a bit more than that. We pulled it out ourselves and took it up there and we're planning on putting it back together and after they, they put it together and we'll install it ourselves too. Um, it definitely needs to be done, we're losing quite a bit of water out of a day tank, it was leaking that bed. Now without it, we got one motor down. I thought it was a pretty reasonable quote.
Yeah.
Cause I wanna say last time there was, time was close to twenty, had it done, but they had a guy come up from Houston on Fairbanks.
Make a motion to approve X-line to do the work down the power plant, power plant on the Fairbanks engine in the amount of six thousand thirty-eight dollars.
Second. Got a motion on the table and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes four and O. Unless there's any other business to be discussed, I'm gonna take the motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn regular council meeting November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Okay.
Motion on the table and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes four and O.